Order. Uh, Mr. Wildsworth, would you lead the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we hear it?
I hear it like a, yeah.
Good evening, City Council. This is the City of Romulus City Council Regular Meeting, and today's date is September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. This meeting is being held electronically via the Zoom Meeting App. Members of the public wishing to participate in this meeting may do so by phone or online, again utilizing the Zoom Meeting App. The raise hand method will be used to acknowledge those wishing to speak during the public comment portion of the agenda. Citizens may also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the public comment portion of the meeting. Tonight's meeting ID number is as follows, eight one four five five nine six two two nine two. Those that would like to join by phone, the number is six one, six four six five five eight eight six five six. Enter the meeting ID when prompted, followed by the pound sign. Tonight, Mr. Chair, we're asking Council to, uh, I'm sorry, there was a special meeting that was held to, uh, prior to the count, tonight's council meeting, roll call was taken at that time, and we have a quorum for this special meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Clerk.
We're asking Council to amend the agenda this evening. Um, and I'd like to submit an amended agenda for Council to approve. Uh, the amendment is to strike Agenda Item Six A under the Clerk's report. Therefore, the amended agenda is as follows. Number one, Agenda. Number two, Minutes. Number three, Petitioner. Number four, Chairperson's Report. Number five, Mayor's Report. Six, Clerk's Report. Seven, Treasurer's Report. Eight, Public Comment. Nine, Unfinished Business. Ten, New Business. Eleven is warrant twenty dash seventeen. Twelve is Communication, and number thirteen is Adjournment. And a motion would be in order to accept the amended agenda as presented.
Some move to accept the amended agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, to approve the amended agenda as presented. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wildsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion is approved.
Number two are the minutes. For approval are the minutes from the regular council meeting held on September the eighth, two thousand and twenty.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll move that we approve of the, of the regular council meeting from September the eighth, two thousand and twenty.
Support.
Been motioned by Mr. Wildsworth, supported by Ms. Abdo, for approval of the minutes from our regular council meeting, which is held on September the eighth, two thousand and twenty. Mr. Wildsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Agenda Item Two B for approval are the minutes from the special meeting closed session that was held on September the eighth, two thousand and twenty.
Some move for approval of the minutes from the special meeting held September eighth, two thousand and twenty.
Support.
In motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Mr. Wildsworth, approval of the minutes from the special meeting closed session held on September eighth. Ms. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wildsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Mr. Chair and Council, under petitioner, um, we have two agenda items.
Have you answered the number?
Answer me.
Yeah.
Um, Agenda Item Three A is a special land use um, for the Mid-Michigan Crushing and Recycling located at twenty-eight, one seventy-five E Course Road. And again, this is a special land use request. And then Agenda Item Two B is, uh, again, a special land use request for, uh, Spartan Barricade located at three zero two one one E Course. I'm gonna ask if our city planner Carol Mays wouldn't mind introducing, um, the petitioners this evening, um, if, you know, as they come, and so that they'll, we'll know who's who with this. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, as we can probably see, looking at our participant list, there's, there's several people on tonight, and they are representing both the, the special land use petitions on your agenda. Um, I understand that Gail McGregor, who is representing Mid-Michigan Crushing and Recycling, will be presenting on behalf of Vaughn Smith, who is the developer, the, uh, applicant for Mid-Michigan. And then also, you'll see the name Nancy Standish, who is on the list. She is their engineer. So, um, Ms. McGregor will, will start out with the presentation, and then, um, if there's anything by the other two to add, I'm sure they will, and then I'm guessing the council has some questions. How does that sound? They do have a PowerPoint presentation that I think you guys can get up and running.
Um, Ms. McGregor, you have been unmuted, and...
Good, good evening. My name is Gail McGregor, and I am with Williams, Williams, Ratner &amp; Plonkett, uh, a law firm representing Mid-Michigan Crushing and Recycling. And as, uh, Ms. Mays said, we have here also at this meeting the principal of MMCR, Vaughn Smith, as well as the engineer who prepared the site plans, um, just in the event that you have any questions. But briefly, um, I do have a PowerPoint. I don't know, I, I don't know if you have that, if your tech people have it. Um, it's not really, pardon?
I'm sorry, Ms. McGregor. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Um, I believe, uh, Mr. Dudek has it, and we actually have the PowerPoint up.
Great, thank you. Uh, I just first want to tell you a little bit about MMCR. It's a, um, stone crushing company, uh, that, that operates throughout the metro Detroit area and has been in business for over thirty years. And tonight before you is the, uh, the special land use, um, permit request that has been recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. The site location, if you want to go to the next page, you can get an idea of where this is located on East E Course Road. It's, um, just north of ninety-four and west of Inkster in the MT District, which is a heavy, heavy industrial district, um, uh, dedicated to those uses that involve heavy truck, truck traffic. So, um, because of the location to the freeway. And the use of the, um, the property for a concrete and asphalt recycling, crushing and recycling operation is a permitted use within this MT District, uh, subject to a special land use permit. Um, this shows you the site plan that you're looking at right now, which will, uh, have a shared driveway with the neighboring parcel to the north. Uh, I'll tell, tell you about this a little bit, but both parcels are owned by the same people. Um, there is, there will be easements. They've been signed and delivered to the city with respect to the use of that area for the ingress and egress. Um, so the trucks will come in off of E Course Road, and there, there is this circle path that goes, uh, around where the trucks will offload the concrete and asphalt to be crushed. Um, if you, if you move to the next slide, it sort of tells you, just in brief, that the concrete's hauled in, crushed by a machine, and then moved off-site also by trucks. Um, the machinery that will be kept on-site is a crusher and a conveyor belt. There will be no permanent buildings. The, there will be a, a work, uh, trailer type of a building. Um, but all of the, everything on-site can be moved away when the operation is completed. Um, and at the termination of the project of the, the u, this use, everything will be cleared, including any, uh, piles of concrete and crushed concrete. Everything will be moved away. So the next slide will show you a picture of the machine itself. This is a picture of the crushing machine. Uh, and basically, basically gives you an idea of what, what that will look like. And then the next slide shows how the finished material, once the, the concrete and asphalt is crushed, it is hauled into, moved into trucks, and then hauled off-site to various different locations for construction use. Um, this business will be operated be, with, uh, between five and ten employees at any given time. Um, the hours of operation are daylight, daytime hours, seven AM to eight PM. Um, this was one of the, the notations of the city's engineer, and the, the owner is willing to just have daytime operations. So that will be the hours of operation. Um, there will be a maximum of twelve parking spaces and one very barrier-free, uh, on-site. And there will be no overnight truck storage or, um, other than the, the concrete that's being crushed. Nothing is going to be stored on-site but for the actual, um, machine, uh, and the, the concrete. And I mentioned the small mobile office that will be there, and also there will be a truck scale, a movable truck scale that will be placed next to the office. So if you, if you look at the site plan, you can see the location of the mobile office and the truck scale. So, the special land use was recommended for approval by the city, the planning board, and, uh, the, the operation itself, uh, it was found to be consistent with the master plan and the standards of the zoning ordinance, um, as well as being consistent with the adjacent land uses, as this is a, a heavy industrial district and very close to the freeways with, with many existing uses that involve truck traffic. Uh, this, the Planning Commission did recommend, uh, did place conditions and waivers on the recommended, recommended approval. Uh, and we've been working closely with the, the Planning Department and the engineer to get each of these conditions satisfied. Um, and I believe at this point in time that they are. Uh, there's been a waiver for the shared driveway, and the setbacks have been approved. Um, there's going to be grea, a green belt and new trees, um, planted on the E Course roadside. Uh, all of the vehicles will be power washed as they leave the site to control dust, um, coming off of the operation, so that as they leave their, their concrete, they'll be washed and they won't go out on the road, um, with a lot of dust. The hard surface and curb requirements were approved, as well as the, um, revised auditory analysis. And that, that is something that, um, OHM did also highlight in their review of this submission um, with respect to the size of berms. There will be, there will be berms on three sides of the property in order to control noise coming from the use of the machine. And that berm size is recommended by OHM to be twelve feet, um, and, and then operation be limited to daytime. And lastly, photometric plan was presented with, uh, lights on the mobile office with full cut cut shields, I'm sorry. So this, this slide shows you the location of the evergreens that are going to be, there's going to be a screen at E Course Road. Um, the number of evergreens that will be planted will be worked out during the engineering phase of the, the, the project, and will be, the, the site plan will be updated for that. The next slide shows the, um, the asphalt areas that are going to be, uh, temporarily, they're going to be gravel. And the next slide after that show, this, this came from the noise analysis that was done, showing the location of the berm, the mitigation berms, that will, um, reduce the noise. And this slide says for nighttime, but, sorry, but there will be no nighttime operations. So the, the berm will be twelve feet, and the operations will only be during daytime hours. The next slide shows that there are some notations put on the plans regarding, um, making, um, right turns in and right turns out of the shared driveway. There will be no left turn. And the, um, the, the owner will be placing signs. And after that is a, that's the light that will be installed on the mobile trailer. Um, and then, finally, I want to mention that there are a number of bonds that have to be posted, and I believe that, um, Mr. Smith is working closely with the city and Mr. McCray to, to get the specific language needed. I believe that some of these have been, uh, completed and delivered to the city, uh, already. And if not, it's only because the bond, uh, the bond issuer was needing more specifics with respect to language. And so all of those bonds and the payment, the sidewalk, um, payment in lieu of construction of sidewalk has also been paid to the city. So those requirements are being met. And there, the, I mentioned that both parcels of property, um, the one to the north that is going to be sharing the driveway with this site, it, they're all owned by the same people. When this first went to the, uh, Planning Commission, I believe that there was, it was not known at that time that, that all of the owners were the same. The, the title record showed that there were, there was a discrepancy in the ownership between the two parcels. Now we know that there was a subsequent deed filed, and both parcels are owned by the same owners. Um, so the condition that was placed by the Planning Commission, that the, the easements, the executed, that has been satisfied. Those easements are executed. So there, we, we have the easements, I believe, that they were delivered to the city for review, and they're fully executed. Um, the, the, there, at this point, since the ownership is common, um, it's, they're not really necessary, but we, they're, and we're willing to record them, if that's, if that's what the city wants us to do. Uh, and then, finally, for, there is a portion of the property that, in the legal description, that bots into East E Course Road, and the Planning Commission requested that that be quick claim deeded to Wayne County, um, because E Course is a, is a county road. And we are working to do that. What we need in order to accomplish that, however, is we need Wayne County to identify that portion of the road of way, the right-of-way that it will be accepting. And we're working with, we will be working with Wayne County to get that done. Um, but as, as of this point right now, we haven't been able to get that information from Wayne County. However, that is something that we will, we will be completing. So this just kind of sums, this page sums it up. The, the address is two eight one seven five East E Course Road. It's in the MT District. It is, uh, heavy industrial with heavy truck usage in that area. Um, we're requesting approval of the special land use for the concrete crushing operation. And, um, the property owners, they've already, they've, they have signed the easements as requested, and the, the MMCR will be under a lease with, or is under a lease with the owners. And, uh, that's the status of the, um, the easements. And I already told you this stuff, but yes, they, MMCR is, is a, a concrete crushing and recycling company that's been in business for thirty years. They operate, um, all around the metro Detroit area and, um, are requesting approval of the special land use permit tonight. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, as I said, we have...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, uh, Wildsworth?
Uh, if I can, to the, uh, to the petitioner, which, um, I think recycling is good, obviously. Uh, is this gonna only be done during the, the, the building season? Well, I mean, when the snow flies, is it gonna be closed down, or is this gonna be, um, going on, um, I guess, the whole year? Here's my question.
And I, I would ask Vaughn Smith if he could be unmuted to answer that question.
Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Okay, so it is somewhat seasonal. We do crush a little bit in the winter, but it is, uh, pretty slow during, uh, late December, January. But it's not unusual that we would crush a little bit through those months.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Ab, Ms. Abdo?
Yes, I just have one question. Um, the woman presenting said that, uh, when, um, they are done, or if they, you know, are done with their operation, that they will be cleaning up the entire area before they go. Do we have that in writing? That's what I'm wondering.
Chair.
Yes, uh, was you through, Ms. Ms. Abdo?
Yeah, I just wanted to know if we have that in writing, that when they're done using this, this land, that they will be cleaning it up? I guess Carol Mays or somebody from?
I, I can answer that question.
Thank you.
Or Ms. Roscoe, you can answer that?
If you look underneath the petitioner's paperwork, one of the bonds, as you seen in the slides, was for restoration. And, um, from what I understand, that would include the fact that if they leave that, um, land disorderly, when they leave there, that bond money will be used to clean that up. So we have, um, so basically that is the, um, written legal wording, I guess you would say, saying, um, yep, it's guaranteed, it's gonna get cleaned up one way or the other.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Ms. Williams, you had a?
Yes, uh, on page seventeen, the summary and recommendations. The revised supplemental has been reviewed by the city staff or OHM advisors. Most of the outstanding items have been addressed or will be addressed as part of the permitting. So I understand, um, the young lady that presented it said some of them. Why is it coming to council before the majority or all the requests, uh, has been done?
Well, ca, could I speak to that?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the four things that OHM said still needed to be done are the bonds, which we're working through with the city now. I mean, it's, it's, I, I believe that some of them have already been posted. Some, the only reason they haven't been posted is because we're working out the, I'm not working it out, but the, the age, the bonding agent and the city are working out the exact language of the bond, but the bonds are being issued. There, that's, that, that's not a question. So, I mean, it's, that, that really shouldn't hold up approval. I mean, it's happening. I think that, um, that there are folks at the city that have been dealing with that bond issue with Vaughn Smith in the last few days. Um, the, the, the other comment that they had was that there should be a ca, a paving schedule provided indicating when the E Course Road improvements and on-site paving will occur, will occur. And the OHM cited that this could be, um, dealt with at the permitting stage. Um, I already spoke to the easements between the, the, um, neighboring property owner, the, and, and the owner of the site. Um, those easements have been signed, and I believe they've been delivered to the city, so that one is taken care of. And then the auditory analysis, um, that was reviewed by OHM. OHM said that they want the, they want a twelve-foot mitigation berm, which, which we are more than happy to do. And they want hours of operation to be limited to daytime hours of operation, which is seven AM to eight PM, which we are willing to do, which we, the applicant agrees. It will just be daytime operations. So the only, really, the only things that, that have to be done are things that can be done, you know, during the permitting phase of this process, um, once approval has been obtained.
Done.
Yes, I'll...
So, I'm, I'm looking now. So is the city pulling this bond, or is your company pulling this bond?
The bonds are, the bonds are going to be pulled by either MMCR or their paving contractor, who is ASI. So some of the bonds are being provided by ASI, and some of the bonds are being provided by MMCR.
So why is this saying the city shall be named, I, I believe, of the bonds, and a copy shall be provided?
That's because the bonds protect the city. They're written for the city's benefit. And so if, if, if a requirement of the bond isn't satisfied, then the city, you, you would be like the insured party. The city is the insured party, so then the, the city can, can use the bond funds, can make a claim against the bond funds.
And I just want to make this clear. During the fall months, daylight time, daylight time stops around six-thirty sometime, five-thirty, six o'clock, five-thirty. So you're saying it goes from seven to eight, so that's nece, not necessarily during the fall month daylight time. So I just want to be clear on that, because it, it, it's dark around, you know, once we get more into the fall, it's normally dark around five-thirty, sometimes six o'clock. So I just wanted to be clear on that, because you was emphasizing that the, the, the operations will be from seven to eight.
Well, I, I think, I, I, well, my understanding is, is that the, the city ordinance establishes what's daytime hours and what's evening hours, um, for businesses. Um, and I, I, I can't really speak to my client's business, but I do know that he's not placing any lights at, at this property other than the two small lights that are beside on the trailer. So, I mean, if there's not enough light to conduct operations, I'm sure they're not gonna be conducting operations, because he's not moving any big lights into this, onto this land.
And then something else, John, you're saying that before the trucks leave off the property and go on to, uh, E Course Road, so you're gonna have a water truck there to rinse down the, or power, uh, truck there to rinse the trucks down to make sure they're not taking unnecessary dust onto, uh, E Course Road?
Yes, yes, there will be a water truck. There will be a truck washing, um, operation on-site.
Okay, because originally you didn't state that until you, you know, mentioned that they're gonna wash it down. So I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, um, there are, uh, actually three hands raised. Uh, one is from Carol Mays, Bob McCray, and Councilwoman Roscoe. Um, and then, and I just saw a fourth hand, uh, Ms. Councilwoman Webb. So, uh, Carol Mays has had her hand up for a while, so in the, this order, Carol Mays, Bob McCray, Councilwoman Roscoe, and Councilwoman Webb.
Thank you. Um, my hand actually will go down, because, um, Ms. McGregor answered most of the questions, uh, from the OHM report. And I'll, uh, you know, defer most of those comments to Bob McCray. They're kind of over in his area anyway. So, thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Go ahead, Bob.
Good evening, Council. Hopefully the audio works this time. I switched the voice to make it a little bit better. Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Um, first of all, I just wanted to speak and clear up some of the language on the bonds. So the bond amounts, um, are to protect the city. They're put in place to make sure the site's restored and the site's, uh, designed and built as approved. Um, and so the, the amounts... And so the the amounts have been agreed upon between the petitioner and the city. We're just waiting for legal counsel on their end to establish all the the terminology they need to have in that bond. So we are, we are in agreement on them, we're ninety percent of the way there on the bonds. We just need to make sure that we nailed down the language with the legal counsel on that. Those are in place to protect the city in the event that something happens and they vacate the site. So I just wanted to clear that up.
I believe Councilwoman Roscoe had her hand up, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to clarify for Ms. Williams. As far as the daytime hours go, when the petitioner was at the planning commission, that question was brought up, maybe not right in that same wording that you had, but as far as, you know, it getting darker earlier as the months go on. And they did state that, you know, as daylight hours decrease, so does their their working. I mean, they may be still there loading a truck, getting it out of there when it's become dark. But as you know, and as they stated, they don't have the big lights and what have you, and it's a safety issue. And they will have their vehicles out of there in time. So basically, even though, like I said, our ordinances are stipulates daylight working hours, I think it's pretty well brought to our attention by them that when it gets dark, their operations will cease. Just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roscoe. Who's next?
Councilwoman Webb.
Ms. Webb.
Yes, to the chair, if I may, I do have one question for Mrs. McGregor, and also a question for Mr. Smith. And I have a comment. In regards to the crushing of the concrete, Mr. Vaughn, Mr. Smith first. Will you be selling the wire and steel that may be coming out of the of the concrete, or will you be stockpiling it on site?
No, we 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 take it offsite.
Okay.
Every week, yep.
Oh, okay. And also, I know the dust is horrendous when it comes to crushing concrete. But I am glad, and thanks to OHM, you know, that you're gonna have the twelve-foot berms there. And my colleague answered the question in regards to the lighting because I didn't know if it was going to be bringing out the big lights, but when they showed the small lights, then I didn't know if it was gonna be dusted on lighting. And one thing for my colleagues to remember, and I, when I read this, I saw them laugh, and this is for you, Gail. When you, all my colleagues know where I live. So I was trying to figure it out, one thousand one hundred and eighty-five feet from any residential area. So you know where I live. It's all the way down to Bibbins, so I don't have a problem with the residence. I I figured that one out, so, you know, the few that's in that area. And it's also, you know, the zoning. So there can't be, you know, any problems with that. But I just wanted other people at home and also my colleagues to know how far away it is from any residence. And I think that that is all that I have to say. Oh, the right of way, Mr. Smith, when they hose down those trucks?
Yes.
Will a lot of water be running out of those trucks, you know, when they're coming out into the right of way, you know, when they pull out?
So if I can, if I could clear something up. So what we've agreed on is is a wheel bath, so the trucks will actually be driving through a bathtub, if you could imagine, where the tires are gonna be being rinsed off. So it's not like the whole truck is being sprayed down because that's sort of problematic. So to answer your question, no, there won't be a lot of water tracked out onto the road. And there's quite a distance between the scale and the street regardless, that's all paved as well. And we'll have a water truck onsite and a broom tractor if necessary, so that won't be an issue.
Well, thank you so much for your presentation. I'm I'm a little bit familiar with the process of crushing anything, whether it's asphalt, concrete, or whatever. So I don't have a problem with voting in favor of this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Ms. Williams?
Yes, I would just like to add, will there be an additional turning lane there in front of that site for those to turn in and into that property?
Chairman Barton, if I can, I I can comment on the improvements on E-course Road.
Okay.
They did submit a traffic impact study for the site that detailed the full buildout of both this site with the crushing activities and then the site to the north that is using the the proposed driveway as well. And because of the amount of traffic that was leaving the existing site and then also the crushing site, the site traffic met the warrants for both a deceleration lane into the site and then a passing lane for left turns on E-course as well. So the, one of the bonds that was spoken of this evening would be for the paving of both of those additional lanes on E-course in front of the the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Barton?
Yes.
I don't know if this is for Mr. Smith or not, but how long is operations planning on being on this site? As I'm reading, was reading through this information, I see a lot of stuff about abandonment, a lot of discussion about abandonment, a lot of discussion about restoration, a lot of discussion, how long do they plan to be here?
Can I address that?
Yeah.
So I'll end up buying this site. It kind of revolves on the permitting. We'll end up owning this property and we'll be there indefinitely. This is our, kind of our family business, we've been doing it a long time. We've been a good neighbor, very responsible neighbor in every neighborhood that we've ever been in. So to answer your question, we have no intention of ever moving. The way that the aggregate situation is in southeast Michigan, there's a high demand for it in recycling these roads and bridges and city streets. It's the the responsible thing to do, so we're trying to do it in a in a responsible way as well. And Mrs. Webb, if I could ever get you to come over and take a look at our operations once we get going, I think you'd be pretty surprised and pretty happy.
Thank you for that answer, Mr. Smith. And so my next question is, and I I appreciate your response and your answer. And I also appreciate the fact that one of the things that Ms. Greg, is it Greg, Ms. Gregory or Gail said at the beginning is that you guys have been in business for thirty years. And so when I'm reading some of the background information on how operations got started here, it was very disturbing to me for a business that's been in business for thirty years. So that's one of my questions because there was activity going on before. It was just stuff going on that just wasn't, you know, done orderly for, to me, a business that's been in business for thirty years. So that's a concern for me as far as doing business here in the city of Ramles, you know, and for a business that's been in business for thirty years, so.
Could I speak to that?
Yes.
My understanding of the history is that prior to to the proposal that we're making tonight, there was a concrete manufacturing business on this site, and they also did concrete crushing. And I think it was just a misunderstanding by the property owner at the time that he leased the property to Mr. Smith, thinking that the property had already been approved for that operation since there was an existing operation there. That's kind of my understanding of the history. Maybe Vaughn Smith could speak to that as well, but I think it was really just a misunderstanding given how the property was used in the past.
Okay, yeah, could you speak to that, Mr. Smith?
So I don't want to rub salt in anybody's wounds. Your own satellite, the city of Ramulus's satellite photos show a concrete recycling crusher on that site twelve years prior to when I got there, and it's been there every year since. So, yes, at that time, city Ramulus did not have a crushing or recycling ordinance. It wasn't until we came there that all this kind of had a chain reaction. So from that point, we had, the way that it's worked in in the past is if there's a crushing facility onsite, it's zoned properly, I wouldn't think twice about your knowledge of this guy being there. So we did move in onsite, we did start crushing. And then we had some conversations with Mr. McCray. And we started the process of trying to permit it properly. But that's a little history lesson there.
No, and that's just wanted it to be addressed. I mean, there ain't no salt in that, it just just listed be transparent about it, so thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tally. Mr. Wisworth?
I've got two quick, two quick questions. I guess they'd be for Mr. Smith also. Is there gonna be any type of a permanent building on there built?
No.
No, okay. And my other, my other question, do your customers make appointments or do they just show up with their stuff?
No, they they just show up.
Okay, okay, fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Barton, one more quick question.
Okay.
And since you guys are gonna be here so long for a very long time, would it would it make sense to have more of a permanent structure on the site instead of something that's movable? Like, is it a mobile office or whatever? Would it make sense to have something a little bit more permanent?
You're asking me?
I don't know, do Gail need to answer it? Whoever?
I, all I can say about that is that I believe that Mr. Smith has plans to purchase the neighboring property with the with the building already on it. And then if that if that transaction occurs, then there will be a permanent building associated with this operation. And I think that is, I don't want to speak for him, but I believe that is his intention ultimately and what he's been working towards.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gail.
Mr. Chair, we have a hand raised from Mr. McCray, Bob McCray.
Good evening, Council. I just wanted to speak on the issue with the history of the site. And on behalf of Mid-Michigan Rock Crushing, when it was brought to our attention and we went to the site, we immediately put a stop work order on the site because we knew it wasn't permitted, although we did acknowledge that use had occurred prior to Vaughn's involvement there. And to his credit, he has honored the stop work order, we never had an issue after that, several follows up to the site after that by staff, showed that. And also whenever he needed to use the site for something to remove material or continue some cleanup, he did contact our office. So he's always acted in good faith as far as being a good relationship. Once he realized that there was a violation that he was unaware of, we never had to make several trips out there to put the stop work order. Once we communicated with them, told them what the issues were, they did shut down operations, they came into the city and started a process. So I just wanted to share that with everybody.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
Now, Ms. Williams, I think, go ahead.
Yes, I would like to know, once you're up and running, is your customers, are they're gonna be instructed to not go west on E-course? I mean, E-course Road, I'm I'm very concerned about the the truck traffic on E-course Road. And the gravel trucks are very heavy and E-course Road is already not up to par. So I I I'm concerned, which direction would your trucks travel the most on E-course Road? East or west?
Well, if I can address that, so loaded, they're for sure going to be going east. Empty, they'll be coming, well, I guess, I guess they could be loaded coming from the west with raw material. So I guess loaded both directions should should be noted. But I will tell you, so we do a lot of business with Wayne County. We provide aggregate for all types of Wayne County road projects, bridge projects. We've never, in our company's history, had an overweight ticket for any trucks leaving our site. We're very particular with the trucks. We make them turn around, if they're heavy, we'll make them turn around and dump some off back at the pile. We don't want to have that reputation of overloading trucks, and besides that, it would come back on us. And it would be not good. So it's just a standard practice for our scale operator to make the truck go back to the pile. So the trucks will be legal, legal loaded weights. And I hope that answers your question.
Well, the legal load weight for Michigan is pretty high. So my my concern was the the wear and tear on the roads. And so as a business, man, I was just concerned in the long run, you know, what what interest, if you decided to purchase the building and the building adjacent to that, what interest would you have in making sure collectively working with Ramles and Wayne County to make sure that E-course Road was at the right repairs? Because with all the truck traffic that we have now, it's 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 pretty substantial. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I wasn't aware, if you're aware of all the trucking, that that traffic that we have from two seventy-five all the way to ninety-four on E-course Road. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I'm very, I'm very concerned about E-course Road because right now it's not in good condition as it is. And so I just wanted to make sure that you, as a businessman, would be aware that we as the residents and even as elected officials, is concerned about the wear and tear of that road. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments?
Did I have a comment?
No, any other comments from council? You have one? Do you have one, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I I would like to just add a little comment there. So I'm not sure, I'm assuming that the city of Ramulus would have to do matching funds if that road was ever to be rebuilt. Is that correct? Anybody? Bob? So.
I mean, there would be matching funds, but we'd have to pay a certain amount.
Right, so it's it's our desire that that road needs to be rebuilt. And I know we've had conversations with Wayne County Road over the last two years. And what we would like to suggest, and this is how it possibly could benefit the city of Ramulus, is we would donate the aggregate, the sub base, to help widen and rebuild that road into a much better surface and safer roadway. So we're in discussions with them, but the budgets have all been strained, as you guys well know. But we're putting it out there that we would like to participate at no charge, especially with us looking at doing a left turn lane and a D cell lane to then have two years later come through and rebuild the whole road. It it makes more sense to us to put our money into rebuilding the whole road. That's just our suggestion, and that's the goal that that we're working after. As soon as we have a permit there, that's our next step, is going to Wayne County Road and try to help rebuild that road.
And John?
Yes.
And I would just also like to bring that, what health risk is it for those just traveling through or the community that surrounds?
Okay, here.
Can you hear me?
Now I can hear you.
I said, what health issue is it? If it's any pertaining to the residents and that surrounding area, even those that's traveling through? Because, you know, when all of that concrete is.
What happened?
I'm not sure, I think we I think we lost her.
Okay.
She may need to log back on.
Right. Right.
Right, um-
Any other questions since you get back on?
Could I, could I just say something to, to at least the part of the question that I heard? I, I believe that in all of the, um, the study that's been done about this in the site plan process with the planning commission, um, and the, the city's engineers, that it was determined that there is no environmental impact of this operation at the site.
Did you have your hand up? Oh, you muted. Uh, you got unmute.
Wrong.
You got, now you-
No, I didn't, I didn't really have my hand up. I was reaching for my water, but-
Okay, alright, alright. Any other questions? Comments? I don't know what happened to, uh, Ms. Williams, uh, so.
At this time, Mister Chair, um, it, uh, the agenda, this calls for action from couns- council. So, after further discussion, if council's ready to take action, um, on the petitioners, um, for the special land use request.
Um, Mister Chairman?
Yes, Mister Wadsworth.
I, I, I will move to, um, approve the Mid Michigan crushing and recycling on twenty-eight and one seventy-five E-course Road for special land approval.
It's been motioned by Mister Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Roscoe, uh, for the Mid Michigan crushing and recycling, which is on twenty-eight, one seventy-five E-course Road, special land use. Any discussion on that? I know we have-
Uh, yes, I have a, I have discussion. Um, I would like for the motion to also include, not only for a concrete, but it's for concrete and asphalt crushing operation subject to the conditions of the site plan approval.
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Roll call vote. Mister Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair vote, uh, Ms. Williams? Chair vote, yes, motion approved.
Um, next on the agenda, council is agenda item three B. Um, this is another special land use request, uh, from Spartan Barricade, located, uh, three zero two one one E-course. And again, I'm going to ask if Carol Mays would be so kind to introduce, um, the petitioners regarding, um, this special land use request.
Well, Madam Clerk, I would be happy to if I can see them on here. You know, I, I don't see the names of the petitioners. We've been trying to contact them since last week about the meeting tonight, um. I, I do see a couple phone numbers on here that I don't recognize. So, perhaps we, we should ask if that's a representative from Spartan Barricade.
Um, I can, um, I could ask to unmute and see if they are. Um, let's say, let's try this one at four nine six three, the last four digits. Um, they're not unmuting, no, so.
No. I am guessing they are not on. They, they were, um, part of a Zoom meeting with the planning commission. So, they, they certainly, you know, knew how to, how to do this, um. So, I, I guess I don't know what to say. Typically, you don't take action on things when a petitioner is not there.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, I do see a hand raised. I believe it's Ms., uh, it's Councilwoman Webb.
Uh, yes, through the chair, if I may, I believe that we can, um, request that the clerk put this petitioner to the end of our meeting this evening. That's about all that we could do in case they come in later, if my colleagues approve.
Agreed.
I agree.
Thank you.
Okay, um, then we will, uh, put this to the end. Uh, maybe under unfinished business, we can move it there and see if, uh, the petitioners, um, have joined the meeting.
Okay.
All right, we'll move on. Um, next on the agenda is number four, the chairperson's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Tonight at five forty-five PM, we have a special meeting, closed session to discuss union negotiations. And then at six, we have a special meeting, study session to discuss zoning ordinance. So, at this time, uh, Madam Clerk, I'm going to, uh, recognize Councilwoman, uh, Roscoe.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, tonight I would like to make a motion in regards to our meeting that we had earlier to concur with the administration and the Human Resource Director's recommendation to approve the tenant agreement for the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Romulus and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Union, which is our ASME union, to be effective from July first, twenty twenty, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Support.
Okay. It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, for to approve the tender agreement for Professor Collective Bargaining Agreement between the city of Romulus and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Union to be effective from July first, twenty twenty, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Any discussion?
Uh, quick question.
Yeah.
Who's, who supported that? I didn't hear, um, Councilwoman Tally support. No, uh, Ms. Roscoe made the motion. I supported it, but I didn't hear.
Oh, you supported, uh, Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, it's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mister Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, the motion is approved. Uh, with that, that's gonna conclude the chairperson's report.
Chair, I'll make that motion to accept your report. Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Abdo, to, for approval of the chairperson's report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mister Wadsworth?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, motion approved. Thank you.
Um, there is no mayor's report this evening, and that takes us to number six, the clerk's report. Um, and, uh, item six A was, uh, was stricken from the agenda or removed from the agenda. That takes us to agenda item six B. And this is for introduction and first reading of a zoning ordinance amendment to TA dash twenty twenty dash zero zero one, Article sixteen condominiums.
Through the chair, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Webb.
I'd like to make that motion to approve first reading of TA twenty twenty dash zero zero one, a proposed tax amendment to Article sixteen condominiums of the zoning ordinance.
Support.
It's motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for introduction of First Amendment zoning ordinance amendment to TA dash twenty twenty dash oh oh one, Article sixteen condominium. Any discussion? Here, no discussion? Roll call vote. Oh. Who made that motion? I'm sorry.
I did, John, Eva.
Oh, yeah, I know I had to check. I ended up supporting the motion by Ms., Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Roscoe. Any discussion? Here, no roll call vote. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Mister Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, motion approved.
Thank you. That concludes the action items under the clerk's report. But before I close out, I'm sure you've, uh, observed an unfamiliar face, uh, that has appeared, um, before you. Um, we have a new deputy clerk in the clerk's office. So, we've had a lot of changes in personnel. And, uh, so I would just like to introduce, uh, Deshawn Hockenhold. He is our new deputy clerk. He's coming from the thirty-fourth District Court. He's coming, uh, with a lot of talents and we're looking forward to, uh, him working with us uh, and sharing all of his talents in the clerk's office. So, welcome, Deshawn.
Welcome.
Okay, thank you. And that con- that concludes the clerk's report.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mm-hmm. Um, we do not have a, uh, treasurer's report this evening. And this takes us to public comment. And I do have two, um, requests to speak. And the first request, um, is coming from a Mister, um, Fenderberg, if I hope I pronounced that correctly, and Mister Fenderberg, uh, let's see, you may now speak.
Funderberg? Uh, yes. I was just wondering with the, um, new subdivision, I'm from, Dr. Funderberg, from the common subdivision too. There's a new subdivision coming back, being built behind. It's called Legacy Park. And I was wondering if it's possible for us to, to have them get their own retain- retention pond because they are hooked into our retention pond. When L-Roll Corporation was first building it, they had asked them to our retention pond. We said, no problem. But since then, getting, cause they were supposed to split the bill with us, half and half, they never did. We had to get an, uh, an attorney into fighting to get our money back. And we've had to replace the pumps two times already. Kennedy Industry has come out and said that those pumps can ha- cannot handle that size retention pond. So, I was wondering, can we go back to our one size and have them get their own retention pond, Legacy Park?
Is, uh-
Mister McCray?
Yeah, Bob, is he still, uh, available?
Um, yes, he is.
Okay.
Yes, it, it's something we can look into. I believe that that title, um, title work on those two properties requires that they use the same detention pond. We could definitely look into that and get back to council on that, uh, on an answer.
Uh, yes, thank, thank you so much because Kennedy Industry says that our two pumps cannot handle that size retention pond.
Okay, we could definitely look into that for you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Um, Mister Funderberg, if you wouldn't mind, um, sending your contact information through an email. Um, then that way we can make sure that the administration gets back with you. Um, please submit that to clerk@romulusgov.com.
All right.
And I'll make sure that that information is forwarded to our administration.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
All right, we have another request that has asked to speak from the public. Um, and that's, um, Tony Heimberger. And I'm gonna ask if he would unmute himself at this time. And, okay, go ahead, Mister Heimberger.
I wanted to speak under, um, unfinished business with the animal shelter and the fee.
So, if I can, Mister Heimberger, under, um, that matter, because it was tabled, um, it cannot be, you know, after you've made, you can, you're free to speak on it or have comments under public comment. But until, um, it is removed from the table, you know, pursuant to Roberts Rule, council can't discuss it until we get to unfinished business. So, if you wouldn't mind having your comments now and then, those responses, uh, to your comments can, um, be addressed under unfinished business after the subject has been removed from the table. I did respond to your email.
I did, I was looking to speak when it came off the table, but I can say it now. At this point, why would we charge somebody twenty dollars to turn in their animal when they're already having a hard time trying to take care of the animal and can't afford food? If they can't afford food for the animal, how is it gonna give them twenty dollars just to surrender the animal? Something doesn't sound right here. I mean, it, it needs to be explained a little bit better as what we're trying to do with this fee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Heimberger. Um, is there anyone else that would like to speak? I want to acknowledge that I failed to read my speech, my public comment speech, uh, before, uh, beforehand. Uh, but Mister Chair, I do not see any other request, um, to speak from the public. And I do not have any more emails, um, concerning that. So, at this point-
Promise closed.
Thank you. So, that takes us to agenda item nine, which is unfinished business. Um, at the September eighth, twenty twenty regular council meeting, a motion was made by Councilman Wadsworth and seconded by Councilwoman Williams to table agenda item six B, request to add animal shelter owner surrender fee to the twenty twenty twenty-one, um, fee schedule. According to Roberts Rules of Order, the matter must be taken from the table before any further discussion and or action from council. Therefore, motion would be in order to remove the foregoing from the table.
Um, Mister Chairman, I'll, uh, move that we remove the, um, animal shelter, uh, owner surrender from the table.
Support.
The motion by, uh, Mister Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Webb, is to, uh, remove the table from the agenda, six B, request to add animal shelter owner surrender fee, twenty twenty-one fee schedule. Any discussion? Mister Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms., Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, motion approved.
Mister Chair, we have Captain Shelby. I know that there were a lot of questions that you all had concerning this, this particular fee. Um, and so, we do have Captain Shelby that has joined us in the meeting. And if, uh, before any further discussion, if you wouldn't, uh, if you would allow Captain Shelby at this point to address, uh, this, this particular agenda matter. Captain Shelby?
Yes, uh-huh.
Captain Shelby, you may speak.
Oh, yes, I'm here.
Okay, you may, you may speak, uh-huh.
Yes, uh, well, this, this, this charge or fee, uh, has, has been pretty much a standard practice in the city for a very long time. Um, and it was, it was classified under just a general empowerment. So, to better, you know, track and keep records and to make sure that, uh, the fee is categorized the right way. Uh, and there, an error was discovered. It wasn't on the fee schedule. So, this is the reason why it, why it came up. So, uh, there is, you know, any hardship situations as explained by Tony, uh, those are always looked at individually. And there is no one that would be, uh, penalized, uh, if they are having a hardship and they need to surrender an animal. And the other, um, comment that I heard about was, what happens if a, a general resident finds a stray animal? Uh, they bring them to the shelter, will they be charged? Absolutely not. They will not be charged.
Okay, any, uh, any question for Ms., Mister Shelby?
Um, Mister Chairman?
Yes, Mister Wadsworth?
Um, I'm completely satisfied with what Captain Shelby said. And unless anybody, anybody else wants to speak on it, I'm gonna move that, uh, that we, um, that we have, that we have approved the, um, um, ordinance to, um, for the, um, animal shelter owner surrender fee.
Support.
Okay, it's been motioned by Mister Wadsworth, it's been supported by Ms. Webb, and this is a question, approval to add animal shelter owner surrender fee to the twenty twenty-one fee schedule. Mister Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
You have votes, yes. Motion approved.
And earlier during the petitioner section of the agenda, council, you all consented to moving Agenda Item six, I'm sorry, three B, the special land use request to the, to unfinished business to give time for the petitioners to join the meeting. So at this time, if there's anyone from Spartan Barricade that has joined this meeting, would you please acknowledge yourself at this time by using the raise hand method? Mr. Chair?
I don't see anybody, and this is, this is kind of out of character for this, this petitioner. So we will continue to follow up and hope, hopefully, nothing seriously has happened and we'll get them on, you know, your next available agenda.
So note it.
Okay.
Okay. If there's no further unfinished business?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Tally.
Yeah, um, maybe for Bob, is Bob McCray still on the line?
Yes.
Okay, and then maybe for him, or he can get, we got a memo, City Council got a memo from Roberta Scappacichi about the C X S, about the railroad on E course, the railroad crossing. And so a memo was sent out, pictures were sent out to C S X. And just wanted to know if there had, has there been any follow-up with that? Any heard, any response from C S X about that railroad track on E course road? Probably not, but just asking anyway.
No follow-up yet. As far as I've heard of, I could talk to Roberto for a second in the morning tomorrow. And I'll have him shoot council an update if there's any new, any new information on that one.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, I believe Councilwoman Williams has raised her hand to speak.
Okay, Ms. Williams?
If I'm not mistaken, I would just like to speak on what Councilwoman Sally just asked the building director. If I'm not mistaken, they, they started doing some type of work on that, that railroad track today.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Yes.
All right.
Is that all the unfinished business? Great, that takes us to number ten, new business. Number eleven?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Wasworth?
Uh, I'll try to make this as fast as I can, but, you know, I don't want to get into the details about, about Wick Road. Everybody knows it's a terrible mess going on up there. But I think by council resolution, we should ask the building department or whichever department that we have to use that on November third, that they do not work on that road. And if we have to do it by council action, I'm making a resolution that we tell the builder, whichever way we can that November third, they cease operations up there. Wick Road is a mess. It's a sickening nightmare. And I know everybody's been up there and seen it. But I don't believe that our residents should have to put up with something that the water department from Detroit brought to us. And I think November third, they should move their equipment and that road should be open as wide as it can. And if somebody has ordered.
I support that motion, council.
Now, I'm going to hear, we can't do that, we can't do this, we can do that. We can put a stop work order for November. You know, and I don't want to, you know, hear about having a meeting about it. I think November third, it should be, it should be, it should be shut down. In fact, there's a gentleman that lives at thirty-five eight zero seven Wick Road. I was attempting to go there today, because I guess they, I guess they knocked out all his, I guess they knocked out his, his some trees in front. And all they told him, well, they were in the right of way. So I'm saying, go back to the resolution, November third, let's take a vote to have it shut down.
Okay, it's been motioned by Mr. Wasworth, supported by Ms. Webb, to have a November third no work order.
On Wick Road.
On Wick Road. Any discussion out further?
Yes, we have a hand, Councilwoman Williams, we have another hand, Count, Bob McCray. And then I would like to comment on that as well. Uh, Councilwoman Williams.
Back when that contractor came before, several weeks ago, I suggested that, because it only made sense. Since we're having so many issues with them starting at one end of Wick Road, not finishing and then going to another end. But just to, and I agree with my colleague, Mr. W, Councilwoman Wasworth. But at the same time, I want to give our mayor's chief of staff credit, because this morning, when Mr. Martin calls and send emails and texts about how these contractors had damaged his trees that was in front of his home, Julie Watoka got right on it, sent it over to Roberto, dealt with Bob McCray about it. So just to let Mr. Wasworth know, the, the, the city and the department heads are on it. They're taking care of that residence, so that issue is being dealt with. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Who's next?
Mr. McCray?
Um, just on behalf of the, the election day and Wick Road operations, early in the planning process for this, it was, it was already discussed and made very, made to be a priority by the mayor, as well as Roberto on that. And driving that point home with the contract, that Wick Road is, is to be passable. Construction is supposed to be moved out of the way. They won't have anything interfering with anybody's access to that election site. We're well aware of how important that day is going to be for everybody. We want to make sure it's easy as possible and pushing it through. So that's, that's been a, a point that Roberto's been driving home on a weekly basis with these guys. And also, like I said, front and center for the mayor when this project started off, to make sure that it was going to have minimal impact, if any, on that election. So, yes, it's been a, a hot topic there, so we are well aware of that.
Well, there again, I don't want minimal work up there by this, I, I want the work to stop that day.
Right.
Purpose of this resolution.
Yep, no, no work in that area.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to add too, is that for the meetings that I've participated in regarding Wick Road, I believe the plan was not to have any, any construction on November the third. They've even prepared another mailer to go out to residents with alternate routes for them to safely kind of avoid Wick Road because of the construction. So that we have, I think we, we have two alternate routes. So another postcard will be mailed out to all of those residents. But I do believe the plan was for them not to have any work, you know, any construction going on, on election day. Just to echo with what Bob McCray has said, Roberto and as well, and the mayor, they have really been on top of this, and I know the mayor has been adding a lot of pressure to the contractors and Roberto as well. So we actually have met and had conversation about that last week, so that to ensure that voters have access to the polling location on election day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, and, and I just want to make sure that we're clear with the resolution. So this is going to cover Cotswell, all the way down Wick, up to Wayne Road.
Yes.
Those areas are open and clear. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments? No more comments? Okay. Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams?
Yes, yes.
Uh, Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes. Motion approved.
Um, that takes us to number eleven. For approval is warrant twenty dash seventeen.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, we pay warrant dash twenty seventeen in the following amounts. General fund, sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy cents. Major street fund, sixty thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. Local street fund, one thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and forty-five cents. Public safety fund, nine thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-five cents. Cable TV, two hundred and eighty dollars and ninety cents. Mearon Road Special Assessment, ten thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and ten cents. Street lighting fund, forty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-two cents. Oakwood Sad, two hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty-three cents. Garbage and rubbish collection fund, ninety thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents. Michigan Indigent Fund, thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-eight cents. A nine eleven service fund, seven hundred and ten dollars and sixteen cents. Library Fund, twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-five cents. DDA, one thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-two cents. Tifa District Two, eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-two cents. Finding Road E-course Construction, one thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars. Water and Sewer Fund, six hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-six cents. Motor Vehicle, seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-two cents. Technology Services, one thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars. Retiree Insurance Benefits, one hundred and ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-six cents. Revolving Fund, four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Current Tax, three thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars and fourteen cents. Payroll Fund, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and seven dollars, sixteen cents. Totalling all funds, one million, five hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Support.
Good motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, to pay warrant number twenty dash seventeen for one million, five hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I wanted to know, what is the lockbox for? It's actually check number seventy-two, five ninety-two. I see it on here several times. And I, I noticed the warrant has changed. Has it changed? Because we have a new finance director and they're doing something different, because it's not the same as it was. The way the warrant is lined up and set up to be able to follow it and understand it. But my question is, what is the lockbox for?
Chair, I can address that issue.
Okay, Julie?
Good evening, council. That item, and I received a phone call earlier today with the same question, Councilwoman Williams, Councilwoman Williams, that is the employee option, they have the ability to take advantage of the, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get the right words here. It's for the flexible spending accounts that they have, as to the federal government, where they can put in funds pre-tax to offset expenses for, you know, costs on prescriptions and such.
Okay.
So that's what that fee is.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure what the, the copy of the warrant that I have is identical that we've been doing for quite a long time now. So I'm not sure what copy was placed in the packet. But I can make sure that we get you a complete one, because it's as we have been doing with the complete rundown of the names, check numbers, what the purpose of it is. You know, we implemented that, what, probably about a year and a half ago now. And so it was in fact done that way. So I'll make sure that council gets a copy of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let me chime in real quick, because that was my question earlier of Councilwoman Williams. I asked earlier that question, but my question too, was the formatting, the formatting was different on the warrant. And so what I was told about the formatting is that it is a little bit different. They're more itemized than what usually is more lumped together. And I was like, it looks different, because every time I look at the warrant, it's a certain way. So when it's different, it throws my pattern off. So I said, something going on here. But she explained it to me, yeah, they were doing something, the way the formatting was different. So, yeah, I was on the same page with you. I asked the same question. So, yeah, so no, it was, it was good. So, yeah, we're on the same page.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Webb? Ms. Webb? Ms. Roscoe?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Webb, yes, okay. Chair votes, yes. Warrant number twenty dash seventeen will be paid.
Number twelve is communication.
Yes, Ms. Webb, oh, go ahead.
That's okay, Tina, go ahead and go first, and then I have some things.
Oh, no, you go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead. Y'all make up your mind.
I'm ready, go ahead.
Don't rush me now.
Go ahead.
All right, I'll go.
Okay.
So, we have a few events coming up, and as everyone knows, with everything going on, our pumpkin festival's been canceled and our light parade isn't happening. But we have a couple virtual contests going on, and one is our sunflower growing contest and the pumpkin growing contest. So the sunflower growing contest, this is a virtual contest. Categories for the single blossom only include largest face and tallest. Measure from top of root to bend before blossom. Prizes will be awarded. All pictures must show entire sunflower with the measuring tape measurements. Entries will be disqualified if not included. All pictures must be emailed to, to Mary, in which her email address is M D R U Y O R at romulusgov.com. And everything is due by this Thursday at one o'clock. So please include your name and phone number in the email, and good luck. And also the pumpkin growing contest, you send everything to that same email. And the categories are from largest and smallest. Prizes will be awarded. All pictures must show entire pumpkin with the measuring tape measurements. Entries will be disqualified if not included. And again, that is due by Thursday, September seventeenth, this, this Thursday. Also, this month, we're still having our free garage sale weekend, which is September twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth. So, you know, I've seen, actually seen some people start having garage sales already this fall. So don't forget about that. And the end of the month, September twenty-fifth, is the drive-in movies that was canceled last month. They're having this month. And again, that is in the park behind the senior citizens building off of Olive and Vivins there. And it's going to be Trolls World Tour. So come on out, everyone. Remember your social distancing. You know, bring your snacks and what have you, and enjoy the movie on, again, that's September twenty-fifth. But that's all I have on to you, Tina.
Listen, we've been talking about, about the election today, so you all know my big thing, the census. So can we real quick, as a team, show our census shirts, please? Please, lift, 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 lift. Ms. Eva, come on. Ms. Abdo, okay. Mr. Wasworth, you out. I know you got a white shirt on, but, you know, it ain't the census shirt.
I got it.
Okay.
I got it.
But he is white, he got the white shirt on, so I'm going to give you credit, Mr. Wasworth, for having the white shirt on, okay?
That's not fair, Tina. I wore mine every night, but we started at five forty-five today, and I haven't had a chance to either go in the room and put that shirt on.
No, I just got to say, you guys have been great. Seriously, the support given regarding the census is winding down. We only have a couple of weeks here. I know people be tired, and we'd be glad to hear my mouth shut about this. It's going to keep going until the end of the September. You guys have been awesome. Our city has been awesome. Our numbers are ticking up, you know, like, again, we're beating everybody. But the problem is, we need everybody to be doing it, the census. So if we can keep engaged for the next couple of weeks, you won't hear my mouth for ten more years, if God willing. But just, let's keep that momentum going for the next couple of weeks. End of September is done. We've done all we can do at that time, but we got to keep it moving at least till then. And I, guys, I appreciate you wearing your shirt. We got one more time before it's over. But let's keep the census and spreading the word and just getting it out in our community. We got two, well, a couple of strong weeks left, a couple of, two to three strong weeks left to really get the word out about the census. So that's one thing. And then the other thing I've been doing, I talked to you guys about the pop-up prayers we've done with the ministry alliance. We got one this Thursday at City Hall, this Thursday at six o'clock. So come out and support. We're pushing the census even there. We had our location last Thursday out on Eureka. We had the census signs up. So we're really trying to push the census and get the word out and pray. So we will do in the pop-up prayer this Thursday, six P M. We will be at City Hall, so come out and support. If you want some prayer, come out there, meet us out there. And then the other thing I want to say is, I just want to just give kudos to the administration, the mayor, his team, Julie, as I said last week, and Councilwoman Williams said today. You know, they just make things easier for me, and I'm sure for you guys as well. When I have to, you know, when I get things from, from residents, they address them quickly, quickly. I can have an answer. I'm able to respond quickly. And that just makes it easy for what I do, what we do as council people. So I wanna say thank you again to the administration, to the mayor, his team, Julie, and everybody, the department, just for help. Thanks for making my job easy, for being a council person, I appreciate it. And I wanna end on this information I received earlier today, um, just awesome information. Ramus Fire Department is now a community action agent for the state of Michigan. And what is going on is that they, their, um, the, the fire departments, um, are involved with the Masked Up Michigan Campaign. The Ramus Fire Department has teamed with, uh, M D H H S to acquire three thousand masks on August twenty-seventh and became a community action agent with the state of Michigan. The high-quality masks were received are, are made by Hanes and are washable and reusable. So people that get one, they get two. You get one, you get one to wear and one to wash, so you can keep that, so you can always have a mask. And then phase one of this distribution, this fire department delivered three hundred masks to the Ramus Senior Center, five hundred to the Ramus City Hall, one hundred and thirty-five to Ramus Towers, and sixty-five to Whispering Willows. And when they met with the administrative staff at each of the senior living communities, they were able to take a few moments to record community outreach videos that Chief Kraus, Director Kraus uploaded to our Ramus Firefighters Facebook page. This was especially important 'cause they wanted to let our residents know that the city of Ramus and Ramus Fire Department can be a resource for their health and safety. In addition to masks, the senior living communities receive September is National Preparedness Month, and October is National Fire Safety Month. Flyers with a supportive message from Director Chief Kevin Kraus, and they were fortunate enough to be able to coordinate with the roles at the Ramus Senior Center to include the September issue of it in the senior communicator. And so as they roll out these phase two, and just wanna thank you and say kudos to the Ramus Fire Department, Chief, uh, Kraus, and just a special shout-out to Brian O'Palner, who's the new clerk over there at the Fire Department. Great job, Brian. Thanks for getting this information over so I can shout you guys out. Great job over there, what you're doing, and trying to keep us all stay in state. So just wanted to shout them out real quick for these great efforts. Thank you.
All right, John.
Yeah, go ahead, uh, Ms. Williams.
Okay, I appreciate, uh, Councilwoman Tally giving a shout-out to our fire, uh, department. We've been giving out masked hand sanitizers, food, and everything you can think of that a resident needs since April. So let us not forget Eric Sabree, our Wayne County Treasurer. Let us not forget Warren Evans, our Wayne County Exec, Benny Napoleon, Kathy Garrick, all of the Wayne County, uh, leaderships have been donating, and we've been making sure that our Ramus residents, just as well as our firemen, uh, is taken care of. And not only is it just the masks, we've gave gloves and hand sanitizers and still available. All you have to do is contact us, so if the, uh, Fire Department, or you got enough for the Fire Department, call me and I'll make sure you get what we have. It's, it's more than enough to go around. On another note, we didn't do the Forgotten Harvest last Tuesday because of the rainstorm that morning, but we will be at the high school tomorrow morning, uh, distributing food as we have since April. Um, all you need is your name and your zip code, and we'll load you up. And on Thursday of this week, we'll be at the Mount Olive Baptist Church located at three five five six five Beverly Road. And, uh, we start at one o'clock for the COVID testing. Anyone can come, but you have to be twelve and older. So again, we'll make sure we get that information on the city website for the COVID testing and for the Forgotten Harvest. Again, thanks, my, uh, council members, uh, for a delightful meeting this evening, and have a good evening.
Uh, Mr. Chair, real quick, and Councilwoman Williams, real quick, I wasn't trying to discuss the discount, anything you guys done. I think you do the great, we're working together. That's the message I feel like we're doing. We're working together as a team, so to make sure we're covered. So no, no discount, we're working together. So no, it was a great colorful meeting tonight, and it was great. So thank everybody, and have a great evening.
The chair, if I may, I'd like to say a word or two. Okay, uh, you know, you know, I've been out of the state and, for a while, but, uh, I noticed some in different cities that I traveled in that, uh, we have, the city of Ramus now don't have good residents. They have good, uh, services throughout the city, uh, in every department. And, uh, this includes the mayor and his administration, and all the council people. I was watching some of the council, uh, through other cities, and this council is really together, you know? Sometimes we don't have agreements, but it's okay to disagree. And, uh, I'm gonna end with this to make everybody happy. The Lions almost won.
Almost.
Is that Eva? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Ms. Barton, we have, uh, Ms. Abdo, and then after Mr., uh, Ms. Abdo, uh, we have, uh, Bob McCrate, who has an announcement as well.
Okay, great. Ms. Abdo?
Alan, my question is really for you. When will the absentee ballots be mailed out? And when they do get mailed out, can we run this on our city website or our Facebook so people know they're being mailed out?
They're gonna be mailed out. They're gonna start mailing them out on the twenty-eighth of, of September. We do not have the ballots yet. Um, we are, uh, hopefully, you know, we'll receive them by this weekend, so we'll be working this weekend and all next week so that we can, um, stuff the envelopes and have them ready to mail out. So, uh, we will, that we will begin, uh, on the, uh, Monday, the twenty-eighth. Um, we have some other announcements that we plan to announce, uh, to the public with regards to the ballots. Uh, we're, we're getting an extra Dropbox, so that's just something that we'll be announcing that information and more, um, instructions as it relates to the ballots. Right now, the big thing are just the applications. A lot of people are calling with, with regards to the multiple applications that they've received.
Okay.
Thank you. And we see a hand, one more, Mr. Barton, uh, Councilwoman Webb.
Uh, yes, uh, uh, to my colleagues, and, and this is to, um, our distinguished clerk. Um, I, I see that our fireman, uh, our chief is still online, and I, and hopefully some of the police. I just found out, three days ago, there's a wedding planned here in this city. It's an outside wedding, and I'm like, okay, what happens now? Because, uh, do I need to tell them to submit the information? Or do I need to tell them that they can't have their wedding, of which I'm sure I, apparently it has been planned, you know, for at least a year. Uh, I stopped in being nosy to see what they were all doing out in that yard on that property. And the wedding is toward the end of the month, and I told them, well, you know, you're gonna have to get, uh, so I don't know how to handle this. So, uh, Ms. Clerk, could you maybe email me or, uh, let me give you their names and addresses, and maybe you handle this? Because I've noticed, you know, nothing can go on in the city. But if we can still have garage sales and yard sales, I, I want to say that we should still be having a wedding that was planned before the pandemic, and it is outside. It's on their property? Uh, it's on a relative's property, but they will have to park on, you know, uh, on Grant Road. They'll have to park on Grant because it's, it's gonna be about a hundred people, she said. But it's on that well-groomed yard over there, so I don't, you know, and I don't, um, I don't want anyone to go, you know, crash the wedding to say that they can't get married because of, uh, uh, the pandemic. But if we can have garage sales and all these other things that's been going on in the city, because the wedding party is family, I mean, you know, that's them, um, I just, you know, I just don't know what to do. So I wanted to, uh, put it in your lap, um, Ms. Clerk.
I believe the governor's orders say they can have groups up to a hundred.
Okay.
Um, we have, um, we have our, a hand raised from, um, Director Kraus, but I know that, um, I don't know if Mr. McCrate has had his hand raised, and I don't know if he's still on, that if he would like to make his announcement, and then we could have Councilwoman Webb. We will have Director Kraus, um, his hand may, his hand may be raised to address your concern. I'm, I'm assuming that, um, so if Mr. McCrate wouldn't mind, um, making his, um, having his comments and announcement?
I'm sure, uh, Director Kraus is gonna speak on the, uh, relation brought by Councilwoman Webb. So Kevin, if you wanna respond, go ahead, and I'll comment after. Thank, thank you, Bob, and good evening, Council. I just wanted to state, um, if, if the wedding is being hosted on private property, um, and they're not requesting, uh, any use of city right away, whether it's streets or closure of streets or anything like that, then they would just be required to abide by the governor's executive orders, which, um, if you're talking a hundred people, they would be within those, uh, within those orders and should be fine. Um, and the city really wouldn't have any concerns with that because it's private property. Um, obviously, they would have to abide by the executive orders of social distancing and utilization of masks and the speed and whatnot, um, but as long as they're not asking for any permitting right away or anything, we should be fine with that.
Oh, well, when you say right away, um, those cars are gonna be parked on Grant. You know, there is no, uh, parking lot or, or anything. Uh, but it's not going to be any type of reception, it's just the wedding, and then they are going to the rece- to the reception. So they're still gonna have to park on both sides of, of Grant. Uh, the wedding is, I, I don't have the address, but it's, well.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need the address out, um, you know, uh, right now, you can forward that to the clerk and we can get it. But if there, if it, if it's a parking issue, uh, that would fall under PD.
Yeah, I think it, uh, now, it's on a Sunday, so I know that the parking may, I mean, you know, the traffic will not be as heavy. But it's not like at that church down there. It's, 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 uh, northeast of that church. But those cars are going to probably park, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is they gonna park on one side of Grant? Or can they park on both sides of Grant? Well, in a way, I'll get the information first thing in the morning to our clerk, and then she can distribute it to you and, and, and the Police Department.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you.
And I believe if, if, uh, Mr. McCrate is still on, he has an announcement.
I am still here, and I'll be short and sweet. I appreciate everybody's time tonight. I know it's been a long meeting. Um, it was just the last minute, then it got brought up, so I wanna make sure we're getting the word out. Uh, but save the date on October third at noon. Of course, we'll be in, in, uh, adhering to any guidelines for the COVID or anything, uh, kicked out by the governor. But, uh, October third at ten, uh, twelve o'clock at Blue Sky, we're gonna be doing a cornhole tournament uh, to benefit some of our less fortunate seniors, um, because some fundraising efforts are down this year due to COVID, some other restrictions. And, um, our good fellows don't have enough to take care of them this year, so I'll be working with Maria Lambert to put this on. So save the date, get your team ready, um, uh, and if it's a rain date, we will be working at the, uh, pavilion down at the Historic Park, and just watch for flyers, things come out soon, so share it and spread the word. And part of what I love about this community is we always show up to help everybody out when there, when there needs to be a hand lent. And, uh, we're gonna try to pull this off, make a good event, raise money for seniors that are less fortunate. So see October third. Thank you.
Is there any more communication? Okay, if not, number thirteen is adjournment.
No moves.
Support.
Mr. Wisler, supported by Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Okay, for adjournment. Mr. Wisler?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo? Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Good night.
Night, everyone.
Good night.
Go Lions.